All right, so I am going to call the zoning board of appeals meeting to order. Can we start with a roll call? So I'm Norma Drummond, the chair. Jim?
James Meyer.
Aziz?
I was, I put it, I, I had put in my commute. Hi.
And Rocco?
Rocco Limatone here, present.
Okay, let me just read a statement to set the stage here for us. Good evening and welcome to the East Fiscal Zoning Board of Appeals Meeting of April 27th. Due to the public health and safety concerns associated with the COVID-19 pandemic, the board is meeting via video conference using the Zoom platform in accordance with the governor's executive orders. There is no in-person public participation tonight. Rather, the public can watch the meeting live through Zoom, online and on cable. Notice that tonight's meeting was published as required and posted on the town's website. The web notice included instructions for members of the public to access the meeting and participate in any public meetings or any public hearings. For each of the public hearing applications on the agenda this evening, public comments will be taken at the appropriate time after the board has asked any of its questions. Please note that tonight's meeting is being recorded and a transcript will be available at a later date. We're starting our meeting tonight with some administrative issues and we'll issue several, then we'll go to public hearings, which are applications the board has already seen. And now we're looking to hear from the neighbors. I will introduce each agenda item, so everyone will know which item we are working on. Finally, we will get to the reviews, which are generally the first time we review applications or are applications where the applicants needed to get this board additional information like a survey. There will be no public comment on any of these reviews this evening. Neighbors will be noticed on these applications at the appropriate time for some future meeting. If you wish to comment on an application that is here before us for a public hearing, when we get to that item on the agenda and I ask for public comment, please do the following depending on whether you are on the phone or online. Members of the public attending online via the Zoom app may use the raise hand feature at the appropriate time if you wish to make a comment. The feature is located at the bottom of the screen. Those attending via telephone can press star nine. The meeting host is raised or that you have pressed star nine and will unmute those waiting one at a time so that you can speak. In either case, please state your name when you are called upon to speak. Just to, in order to keep this meeting orderly and ensure we get a clear recording, please follow these ground rules. When you are given access to speak, please state your name and address. It is helpful for the board members to know if you are our neighbor to an application. Board members, I will call on you one at a time to speak to avoid everyone speaking at once. If you wish to speak on any, at any time when I'm not calling on you, you may also rate, use the raise hand function or literally raise your hand so I can see you on the screen and I'll call on you. Also, board members, please mute yourselves when you are not speaking. This is especially important if you're not the only one at your home or you have animals that might bark behind you. I was on a call this afternoon and somebody was doing their laundry. So, you know, you never know what's happening in people's homes. We will use roll call voting for purposes of all board motions. This is to ensure that the record is clear. Thank you in advance to everyone for your patience and bear with us as we conduct our meeting this way. Remember, we're used to having papers in front of us. Now we're looking for documents on our computers in addition to those on paper. So, thank you. I'm, right, like I said, now I gotta find the agenda. Okay, so administrative issues first. I'm going to ask everybody to please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America. And to the public, which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, now I gotta go back to the agenda. Okay, our next meetings are going to be Tuesday, May 25th, which is the Tuesday before Memorial Day. And on Tuesday, June 22nd, we do have one set of minutes to approve. I did send those around last night with a couple suggested amendments. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
So moved. Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you. And by the way, for the board members in particular, we, the town board at their March meeting did appoint a new member for us. He unfortunately was not available to join us this evening, but we do have a new board member, Brandon Rhodes. So he should be with us for our May meeting. So if you see him copied on emails, you know, agenda items and other things going forward, you please understand he is our new board member. There is still a vacant alternative seat. So if anybody's interested in joining us on this board, there is still an alternate seat. So please send your resume to the supervisor and you could, you would be considered. So we have no decisions this evening. Our first item is a public hearing. It's appeal 3981 Jessica DeRosa's perfect pause. Jessica DeRosa, 92 Hosner Mountain Road, Hopewell Junction is requesting a 120-foot frontline variance, a 101-foot sideline variance and a 114-foot sideline variance to run a doggy daycare out of an existing building pursuant to section 194-55-1 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So just to set the stage for this, we've been looking at this application a couple times now. You did have to get a new survey done so that we can understand exactly which structures were on the property, where they were, that all the other structures were legal. There's no classification in our code for a doggy daycare, but in essence, the closest thing is essentially a kennel. But I want to be very clear that you are not talking about any overnight stays for any dogs.
Right, so there, we are talking about overnight stays, but only inside, no outdoor kennels.
Okay, but was that right away or that you were gonna build up to that at some point?
That we're gonna build up to, that's not something when we first move in, we're gonna jump into.
Okay, and so your expected hours of operation?
About 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM. But we plan on doing windows of time where you can drop your dog off from 8:00 AM to 10:30 and then our lobby is closed and locked. And then from 4:00 PM till 8:00 PM, you can come pick up your dog. 8:00 PM, we're closed and that's it.
And approximately how many dogs are you talking about at any given time?
30 dogs maximum, variance on weight.
Okay, and any, the number of dogs that would be outside at any given time?
No more than eight.
Okay, because, you know, obviously dogs need bathroom breaks, they need.
Right, so the way we.
Sunshine, you know.
Yes, the way we planned on doing it is eight to one staff to dog ratio. And then that way, one play group can go outside, be with their team member and then, you know, have their potty breaks, stay outside for about a half hour and then come inside, then the next group can go out, they can have their break. That way, we're not having immense amount of dogs outside because then they can get more loud and rompy. This is really for them to go outside, get fresh air, go to the bathroom and then come back in.
Okay, and again, we're talking about an existing building and that's why the variances are required because it's not like you're building new and we can just place the building anywhere on the site. The building exists, it's been vacant for a while. And so this would actually get a use back into this building. But we, you know, do have to be concerned about the fact that for this, well, actually for any use, it's not gonna meet the required code. So it's important for us to resolve the fact that this is a, still a viable building that, that needs to have these variances because the code has changed since the building was built. So any questions or comments from board members?
I'm good.
Yeah, I think my recollection is that she has a supportive of neighbors who are interested in having a doggy daycare nearby, so.
Yes, that is correct. I did call them and tell them that we had this meeting and told them they could log on if they wanted. They did come to one of the prior meetings.
Correct.
But I did call them two days ago, gave them the information and told them they're more than welcome to log on.
I have no further questions or comments.
No questions.
Okay, so is there anyone who wishes to speak for or against the request from Jessica DeRosa, 92 Hosner Mountain Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 120-foot frontline variance, a 101-foot sideline variance and a 114-foot sideline variance for the existing building to run doggy daycare out of this building? Do you use the raise hand?
Raise your hand or hit star nine if you dialed in.
Thank you.
So one person has raised their hand. We have two hands raised, so I'll allow them to speak now. The first one's Melissa Shalia.
Melissa, welcome to the meeting. And so go ahead and if you can, let us know if you're a neighbor or where you live. We'd appreciate that.
Melissa, just moved to Hopewell Junction. 29 Marcy Lane is my address. I have two dogs and I'm in total support of this because where it's located, it's right by the Deconic and I can drop my dogs off. I work all the way in Westchester, so this is a great place for my dogs to go. And I'm really looking forward to this establishment when it's up and running.
Great, thank you very much.
Welcome.
Michael, there's another speaker?
Yes, we have a person who dialed in, so I don't know the name at this point, but allow this person to speak.
So for the caller who raised their hand, welcome. You are still muted, but if you can, there you go. If you want to let us know what your thoughts are, we'd appreciate it.
Hi, yes, my name is Kristy Simmons. I'm at 47 Martin Road and I'm very excited to hear of this daycare opening. I agree with the last participant that it's a great location by the Deconic. You know, I have to hop on 84, so I think that would be super convenient and just a nice addition to the community.
Thank you very much. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you.
All right, Michael, any other?
No other hands are raised.
Okay, so seeing no other participation or public comments, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 This is appeal number 3981. Applicant is Jessica DeRosa, perfect pause, requesting a 120-foot frontline variance and a 101-foot sideline variance and 114-foot sideline variance from the requirements of section 194-55-1 of the zoning ordinance for the proposed doggy care center, the variances. Our resolution offered by zoning board member Aziz Hassan, whereas applicant is proposing a doggy daycare, care at the property and whereas applicant has only, only has one residential neighbor who has requested that large tree be refrained from being installed, large trees be refrained from being installed as they, as to not interfere with the satellite service. And whereas a facility is proposed to be located in an existing building with a dog run, proposed to be located away from the closest residence. And whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Duchess News on April 21st, 2021. And whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on April 27th, 2021. And whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of the variance will not produce and an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood since the ZVA has conditioned safeguards to prevent noise from emanating from the property. The desired results cannot be achieved by some other means due to the layout of the property and the pre-existing building. The various, the variances are substantial, but the building is pre-existing and has been vacant for a number of years. The variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental condition as the building is pre-existing. Now therefore be resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request by Jessica DeRosa of perfect pause for a 120-foot frontline variance, a 101-foot sideline variance and 114-foot sideline variance from the requirement of section 194-55.1 of the zoning board, zoning ordinance for a proposed doggy daycare subject to the following conditions. One, the applicant should obtain site plan approval from the planning board. Two, the compliance with all other requirements of section 194-55.1 of the zoning, of the town code that applicant did not receive a variance for. Three, sound absorbing materials should be installed within the building and around the perimeter of any outdoor runways and exercise pens. Four, an escrow of 1,500 shall be held by the building department in escrow for one year from the date of certificate of occupancy to be used to hire an acoustical engineer or qualified noise expert should there be any discernible noise emanating from the property or other complaints. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Second.
Thank you, Jim and Aziz. Follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Rocco? And myself, aye. So your motion carries. Now you're still with the building department, okay?
Thank you guys so much.
And the planning.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you, have a good one.
All right. Item number two, appeal 3987. Paul Weiner, Paul Weiner, 41 Lavelle Road Homes is requesting a two-foot height variance for a proposed six-foot high fence to be located in the front yard and a variance to have an existing 1,152 square foot garage in the front yard pursuant to section 194-90 gate of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Okay, Mr. Weiner, if you could identify yourself or the host can help you there. Hopefully that's you. Mr. Weiner, is that you calling in on the phone?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, good, thank you. All right, so Mr. Weiner, you did appear before us last month. We did review your application. You on a parcel that is over five acres, for lack of a better description, it's kind of shaped like a boomerang. So it kind of angles out from both sides. And the very interesting thing is that Lavelle Lane has no turnaround. It's not a cul-de-sac. And so you're very legitimately concerned that trucks and delivery are, people are turning around and you're, they're using your driveway in essence because they get to the end and they need to turn around. There is no place for them to go. And still a little, it just means you're just pushing all those trucks onto somebody else's driveway unless these folks are just gonna back all the way up. But so again, because of the way your lot is laid out, I'm, not a lot of room behind you to put the garage, but you've already got quite a large, you know, quite a long garage. And so for, you know, we talked about putting it over to the, if you're facing your house, we talked to putting it, well, putting over to the left of the property, but you said because of the topography and everything and you, just the layout of the house and everything, you would run into some issues there. Your well is in the back, so you can't necessarily put it there. I don't know if you identified for us where your septic is?
Septic's in the front.
Septic's in the front? So it's gonna be like directly in front, not where you're talking about the driveway to get to the new garage, right?
Sorry, well, I'm not building a new garage.
Oh.
I'm not touching the garage. You guys wanted to clear.
This is the existing garage, okay.
Yes.
So what we just wanted to do was clean up the fact that it already, it has a permit on it. It had, okay, all right, so it has a permit, but we don't know that it ever got a variance to be in the front yard. That was what the issue was, okay?
Right, yeah, it was built like 40 years ago.
Got it, okay, thank you for that clarification. Okay, so is there anything else we didn't add here that, or that you'd like?
No, I, I mean, just the, the primary thing is the two height variance on the, on the gate. Like, you know, I have one, I have two neighbors, you know, one neighbor on each side of me. My, my road becomes, you know, sorry, Lavelle Lane becomes my driveway. Both neighbors on both sides have no objections to the gate. And, you know, it's not gonna, the two feet is not gonna impact anyone.
Yeah, okay, and frankly, I mean, it will be a bit visible for anybody who pulls all the way into Lavelle Road, Lavelle Lane, sorry. But I, you know, we understand that you're trying to, you know, limit some of the traffic that actually would be pulling into your driveway here. So any questions from board members?
Oh, thank you.
Okay, so we've opened the public hearing. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request from Paul Weiner, 41 Lavelle Road Homes requesting a two-foot height variance for a proposed six-foot high fence to be located in the front yard and a variance to have an existing 1,152 square foot garage in the front yard? Go ahead, Michael, I'll let you say it.
If you would like to speak on this matter, please hit the raise your hand function. We have no other calls except for Mr. Weiner.
I see. I'm in favor.
Thank you. So do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Jim?
So in reference to appeal number 3987, applicant Paul Weiner requesting a two-foot height variance from the requirements of section 194-98 of the zoning ordinance for proposed six-foot high fence and a variance to have a 1,152 square foot detached garage located in the front yard, located at 41 Lavelle Road Homes during after the property, the resolution offered by zoning board member James Meyer, whereas the applicant's property is located at the end of Lavelle Road, whereas the applicant is requesting a six-foot high gate at his driveway, a 1,152 square foot detached garage to be located in the front yard. And based on the slope of the driveway, a four-foot high gate would be insignificant. Whereas this request is based on safety concerns to prevent delivery vehicles from using this driveway as a location to turn around. Whereas the detached garage is less than 60% of the footprint of the applicant's home and is an existing structure. I'm gonna do my pen. Whereas this action is a type two action under secret, no further action is required. Whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Duchess News on April 21st, 2021. Whereas the zoning board of appeals, all the public hearing on April 27th, 2021. And whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood as the gate will be located at the end of Lavelle Road on the applicant's property as unusually shaped. The shape of the property and the location of the house also allows for the best location of this existing detached garage to be in front of the house, but where it would not be visible from the roadway or from neighbors. And the use of the property remains residential. The desired result cannot be achieved by some other means due to the slope of the driveway. The variance for fence height could be deemed substantial, but it's reasonable given that the gate will increase safety and the size is mitigated by the slope of the driveway. The size of the detached garage is allowed by code and its location best services, serves the apartment in the front yard. The variance would not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request of Paul Weiner for a two-foot height variance from the requirements of section 194-98 of the zoning ordinance for proposed six-foot high fence to be located in the front yard and the request to have the 1,152 square foot existing detached garage located in the front yard. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Second, as amended.
Thank you, Aziz. So votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Rocco? And myself, aye. So your, your motion carries. All right.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
You're very welcome, have a good evening.
Thank you as well.
All right, item number three, appeal 3989. Jose Byavati, Jose Byavati, 10 Orchard Lane, Hopewell Junction is requesting an 11-foot sideline variance and a nine-foot rear line variance for an existing 240-square foot shed pursuant to section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Mr. Byavati, if you can identify yourself so our hosts can.
If you could raise your hand or hit the star nine function if you called in. I don't see Mr. Byavati.
Hmm, well, we noticed it, I guess we can go ahead without him, right? And just in case any of his name.
Go ahead with that.
Yeah, because we did talk to him, so we did talk to him last month to get the information on this. It is Orchard Lane, not Orchard Road or Drive or any other orchards in town. And we, we asked the question, I believe the shed is 12 foot by 20 feet. Okay, so it's actually too large for, to qualify for the fence, for the shed amnesty. And so that's, it's also, that makes it too large to move. But one of the important things to note is that Mr. Byavati bought the house, bought the property with the shed already there. It's not like he placed it where it is. So it's, you know, nicely tucked into the corner there, barely visible from the front. So it's actually almost 200 feet back on the property. So it's, you know, unless it's bothering any of the neighbors, it's frankly probably in a good location. So, but that's what, at this point, we want to hear from neighbors. So any comments or questions from other board members?
I'm good.
No, thank you.
I'm good.
Okay, so is there anyone here to speak for or against the request from Jose Byavati, 10 Orchard Lane, Hopewell Junction, requesting an 11-foot sideline variance and a nine-foot rear line variance for an existing 240-square foot shed?
If you'd like to speak on this matter, please hit star nine if you dialed in or hit the raise your hand function. I don't see any speakers.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Thank you, sir, second?
Second.
Rocco?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So the public hearing is closed and Rocco, if you want to offer the resolution?
This appeal number 3989 for Jose Byavati. Project is an 11-foot sideline variance and a nine-foot rear line variance from the requirements of section 194-107 and the scheduled bulk regulations of zoning ordinance for 240-square foot shed, the variances. It's at 10 Orchard Lane and Hopewell Junction. Resolution being offered by zoning board member Rocco Limatone. Whereas the applicant purchased the house two years ago from a bank with a pre-existing shed. Whereas the applicant applied for an extension of his house during the inspection, the town determined that the shed required variances. And whereas the shed has a foundation and is anchored into its current location. And whereas the shed is in good condition and whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Duchess News on April 21st, 2021. And whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on April 27th, 2021. And whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of variances will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood as the shed existed prior to the current owner and the property will remain residential nature. The desired result cannot be achieved by some other means due to the driveway being anchored into the ground. The variances are not substantial. The variances will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now therefore be resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request of Jose Byavati for an 11-foot sideline variance and a nine-foot rear line variance from the requirement of section 194-. And a nine-foot rear line variance from the requirement of section one ninety-four dash one oh seven. And the schedule of bulk regulations of the zoning ordinance for a two hundred and forty square foot shed. If further resolved, then within five business days of the adoption of this resolution. The chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board. Shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of closing the public hearing? Aye. All right, so then votes as follows, Jim.
Aye.
Aziz.
Aye.
Rocco.
Aye.
And myself, aye. So in absentia, we have approved this for Mr. Byavati. All right, so that's it for public hearings this evening. Now we're going to go on to reviews and honestly, these are all new property, you know, new, new reviews. So the first one we have is item number four, appeal three nine eight eight, Manuel Bravo. Manuel Bravo, one sixty-eight Old Southern Lake Road, Hopeful Junction, is requesting an eighteen-foot side, left sideline variance. And a twelve-foot right sideline variance for an existing dwelling. A nineteen-foot sideline variance for an existing deck, a five-foot sideline variance for a proposed ten-foot by ten-foot shed. A variance for a proposed pool to be located in the front yard. And a two-foot height variance for a proposed fence to be located in the front yard pursuant to sections one ninety-four dash ninety-eight. One ninety-four dash one oh seven and one ninety-four dash ninety-five of the zoning ordinance. So Mr. Bravo, I see that you are here. Thank you for joining us this evening. If you don't mind taking us through your request, it appears to us that you've just recently bought this home and would like to renovate it. So. You're on, you are muted. If you can unmute yourself.
Good night, everybody.
Hi.
My name, yeah, my name is Manuel Bravo. My address is one sixty-eight Old Southern Lake Road, Hopeful Junction.
Okay. So you're looking to do what to the property?
Uh, I want to, I want to put the fence, I want to put the shed on the pool. And, um, and the renovation, the whole housing.
So the deck is exist, I'm just reading what you've written in your application. You just, deck is existing and the stair sits on the property line. So and you would like to relocate the stair and rebuild the deck. Okay, so that makes sense. You're going to rebuild the deck, you truly have the opportunity to move the stairs.
Yes.
But how large is the deck and that's there now and how large is the proposed deck?
Uh, now it is the eleven foot by seventy or. Uh, I'm not sure, I haven't the plans, but I think it's, uh, wait, it's eleven, eleven foot.
Mr. Bravo, your existing deck is very, very close to the property line. I, it doesn't show me the dimensions of your existing deck. Is it going to basically be at the property line? It's very difficult for me to. To see, you know, how what, how far it would be from the property line.
Okay, so perhaps Jackie, since you took the application in the first place. It appears that the existing deck is. Almost six feet away from the property line, right? So, but. But it's so that's.
So, okay, so this was, um, Ray Cronizer was out there. It's right, Ray's not here. Ray's not, didn't, okay, uh, so Ray Cronizer's out there. So this deck that he's rebuilding, he's rebuilding it, I think. Correct me if I'm wrong, okay, that you're rebuilding it in the same spot, but he has to move. The steps because the steps. Were encroaching. We had to, he has to move the steps, but the, the, the deck is staying in the same spot, right, sir?
Yes.
So you're asking for a nineteen-foot sideline variance for the debt, right?
Yes.
And, and actually, Mr. Bravo's design professional is going to speak now too.
Oh, okay, good, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Costabile, um, if you can mute yourself.
Yes, hi, my name is Pat Costabile. I'm, I'm Manuel's, uh, design professional. I work for the engineering company. I'm the one that did this drawings. So we're, the, the deck that's there existing is in really bad shape. Uh, it's about to fall down and it's, uh, the edge of the deck existing. Was like seven inches away from the left-hand side of the, of, of the property line. And the proposal is to bring it flush in with the house on that side near the property. So that it doesn't encroach past the house and we're going to stick it out past the, uh. Uh, let's call it the driveway side so that it can catch the edge of the stairwell, the new stairwell that goes up into the deck on that side. So that was a proposal by, uh, the building official, believe it or not.
Okay, so you're proposing, you're actually going to shrink the size of the depth to make it more in compliance. But again, just because of it's the nature of how the house was built originally and the, um, it's, there's. There's no way you can comply with the building code at this point.
Yeah, it's in the, I, I don't know why it's there, but it's in a crazy spot.
I mean, it's the same reason the house, the house itself needs a variance, so. Okay, so the fact that you're making the deck smaller, we appreciate that. And then you're going to bring the stairs, you'll, you'll move the stairs, so those will not be going over the property line.
Correct.
And then there's, there's a retain, a block retaining wall that's going to be replaced.
Yeah, which is, which is falling down. It's.
Is that staying on your property though?
I'm, no, it's on, it's on our, on our side of the property.
Okay.
Doesn't, it's a multiple feet away. I think it's like five feet away or almost six feet away from the property line.
Okay. There's so many lines going on this thing. I'm not exactly sure.
Yeah.
How high is the retaining wall going to be?
Hold on one second.
Well, it's going to be replaced with a rubble stone wall, so it's not really a retaining wall, right?
Well, it's going to retain the earth that's there, uh.
Okay.
At the highest point, it's three feet tall or three and a half feet tall at the highest point.
That's okay. We just needed to be sure it wasn't exceeding four feet.
Yeah.
Okay, so again, there's an existing pool with a fence around it with a patio.
It's not, it's not existing, it's proposed.
Oh. So you have two front, you have two front yards. That's what the issue is. This is a corner lot.
Yep.
So because you, the property also has frontage on Brody Road. Putting it in that location makes it, puts it in a front yard. About that front yard, is it going to be visible from the street?
In the, uh, other than the fence, the fence around it, yeah.
So there's no screening there? There's no vegetation there now?
No, it's all open.
Ugh, um, how far back is it? I don't have a measurement here.
Forty-two, it's almost fifty feet from the front, from the front line.
Almost fifty feet?
Yeah, it's just about fifty feet. I, I, I believe it's fifty feet.
Is the lot level, is it sloped?
It's sloped, it's slopes from that, that funny corner on the right-hand side on Brody.
Right.
Lightly down towards the driveway. But that area where the, where the, uh, the pool in the shed is, is the flattest part of the lot.
Okay, but again, if it's a little, if it's higher at the roadway, it makes the pool less visible.
Yeah, not much though, it's, it's.
Okay, so then we have to hear, we have to talk about screening because we, people shouldn't be seeing pools in front yards.
Yeah.
So we're going to need some screening here or something. Otherwise, I don't see why we would want a pool there in that location.
I got you. Uh, landscaping is not a problem. We can do landscaping there.
And we're going to need a landscape plan, I think, for this one.
I'm sure.
Because this is, again, you're, you're not even talking fifty, you're talking approximately fifty feet, I would be. Um, and that's, you know, in the scheme of things, that's nothing, so. You know, it also would help the, Mr. Bravo enjoy the pool more if it's screened in with some vegetation, so.
Yeah.
All right, any other comments or questions from board members?
No, thank you.
It's actually, it's actually fifty-seven feet from the property line.
I was wondering, can the pool be pulled in a little closer to the concrete walkway? Or to the house?
Towards the house more, sure.
How, how much closer can you bring it to the house?
Well, we don't want to bring it too far, but, uh, probably could bring it ten, ten or twelve feet.
Yeah, the further away from the road, the better it is.
You can't go, if you go ten feet, you're hitting the shed, where the patio is going to hit the shed.
Yeah, the shed would have to slide also.
Yeah, but it's a proposed shed.
Right, it's not there yet.
Correct, correct, so because you've got equipment that is going to go with the pool. So it may make more sense to, uh, put the shed and the. Equipment around the, the pool or in the same general area, so it's away from the, it's away from the neighbor's property. I, I also see these, uh, uh, line that is around the, it's like a. What is that line about that goes around the shed and the pool? What is that line about?
The squiggly, the squiggly line, that's a revision line, that's a revision line.
Okay, I see, okay, uh, because it goes into the neighbor's property and I was trying to figure out what's happening here. So, yeah, if you can bring it, uh, closer to the house as much as you can away. So that it will also help in screening noise and everything else that goes with it.
Okay.
If, if you can tell us, how close is the neighbor's house on Brody Road?
So the Brody Road or those, um. Um, like the summer cottages? I guess it was, uh, a campsite at one time.
Okay.
And there's a whole bunch of these cottages that are like in a row there. Uh, Manuel, do you know how many of cottages are in a row there?
It is four or five.
Okay.
How close, how close do you think the nearest one is to your property?
The, the first cottage?
Yeah.
Uh, the first cottage, forty feet.
There you go. Okay.
So the four, so the forty feet plus the twenty-five that you're proposing for the pool. Gives the neighbors about sixty-five feet from that pool.
Correct.
Is there any vegetation on that side of the property?
No, there's a tree that's, uh. Um, in between the two, if you want to say this, there's a tree.
So again, the landscape plan should include something, arborvitae, something that will have some decent. Depth and height to it, so it can, you know, again, give you more privacy or give your, your app, your, uh. Property, Mr. Bravo, more, more privacy, but also, you know, screen the noise a little bit from the neighbors. Aziz, any other comments?
Um, the only thing is that in this particular, uh, map, I don't see the steps. Uh, I kind of, I'm kind of visualizing where the steps will be, but I don't see any steps. So I'd like to get an updated, uh, survey showing the steps and the location. Uh, you know, the distance from Brody Road, uh, to the proposed pool location as well as.
The steps you're referring to, the steps for the pool?
No, the steps from the exist, from the deck, it looks, appears to me like there, there are steps there. They're leading into another set of steps perhaps?
No, underneath, the, the, the dotted line is the, is the existing retaining wall that's there.
No, further down, closer to the house itself. Where are the steps down from this deck?
Right in the middle of the house, like right toward the edge of the house, that's to the deck. It's a, it's a full flight of stairs. The deck is eight feet above the ground.
Also, the decks are, the, the steps are not towards the neighbor's property, this, uh, where it says concrete. And the steps shown, those are the steps for the deck?
Yes.
Okay, I'm good then.
Okay, that's what I thought, okay.
Norma, they also have a, a, a six-foot fence they're looking to put in too. Do you see that on the right-hand side by the pool?
Yeah, it's actually, actually the six-foot fence is proposed to go that right-hand sideline and then back on that little strip.
Yes.
The bowling alley strip over there.
Like down the, the bowling, like down the flag lot.
Yeah.
Across and then down towards Brody Road.
Yeah.
So that, they want to put a fence there, so that might block it.
The fence location is not on this plan, is it?
No, it's there.
Now, there's one, there is a fence, it's highlighted, can, maybe you can't see it, maybe you couldn't see it.
The only one I see is the four-foot minimum high fence around the pool. I don't see any other fence on here.
No, it's highlighted on there.
Yeah, it's in pencil, looks like it says six-foot fence.
Yes.
Oh, it's on the, okay, it's, it's on this, it's on the plans, guys. That's what I'm looking at, is the plans.
Well, I'm looking at the survey.
Yeah, it's on the smaller page one.
Okay, so the fence that you're proposing on that side eliminates the need for, um, a landscape plan on that side. Well, you should still give us a.
Still, yeah, you still need one on the roadway side, yeah.
But you definitely absolutely need, will still need some arborvitae's or something for Cynthia, something that's got some depth to it.
Sure.
Summer months when people are using the pool, okay?
Absolutely.
Okay, so we'll see you. Any other questions or comments from board members?
Um, again, as I mentioned, I'd like to get a updated, uh, plan for the, for the next step. Uh, so I can, you know, figure out, uh, what variances they're actually looking for. Because I don't know how close they are to the Brody Lane, maybe it's fifty-seven feet, maybe it's fifty-nine, I don't know. And, um, so again, if they're going to propose to pull it a little bit closer to the house, I'd like to know, you know, where everything is. So again, it can go to public hearing, but I still, I would like to, uh, see the fence, everything on one plan. Because I wasn't, you know, I just saw that they've got, uh, like four or five variances that we're looking for. So I'd like to see it on one plan.
Um, I agree, Aziz, but I'm not sure I'm ready to see this go to a public hearing. I think we need to see where exactly this pool's, the neighbors are entitled to see where this pool's going to go, so.
That's true, that's true.
So, and, and they should be able to see what the landscaping should be, is, is going to be, so.
I agree.
All right, so, Mr. Costabile, you're going to be able to resubmit and we'll see you again next month?
Yeah, what I'll do is I'll blow the sight plane up for you guys so you could see it a lot clearer.
That'd be nice.
You got it, like I said, the fence is drawn in on this little bit, and yeah, you're right, there's stuff handwritten in, but that's not on the plan, so.
Yeah, I didn't know, I didn't, I don't, I don't remember that.
Okay, all right, we will see you again next month.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a great night, guys.
All right. Okay, item number five, appeal three nine nine one, Moro Crane, Moro Crane, two sixteen Limekill Road, Hopeful Junction. Requesting a twenty-foot height variance to maintain an outdoor storage pile of thirty feet. Pursuant to section one ninety-four dash fifty-five point two A of the zoning ordinance. I presume that Drew is the, here for the applicant?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so if you don't mind taking us through, board members, just to refresh your memory, we did see orig, the original application from Moro Crane. When they were looking to you, you know, determine use of this site to begin with. Um, and so now I guess that they're actually in use, we've. Um, and so now I guess that they're actually in use, we, they, we just want to be sure that we're, that they're using this site as we all expected, which I believe they are. Um, if we can have the other two people that have joined us introduce themselves for the record.
Terry Han, Principal, LADA PC, we're the site planners for the project.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yes, hi, it's, it's Richard O'Rourke from Keen & Bean PC, uh, attorneys for the applicant, but Drew is going to give you the presentation, thank you.
That's fine, Richard, I thought that would might be you, but. All right, guys, Drew, go ahead, take us through.
I do have a PowerPoint presentation, would it be okay if I shared my screen?
Sure, Michael, can you allow her to do that?
Here we go, it's, it's short, it's not too long. But I think it helps show everything, um. I don't know why it's, hold on.
Oh, it's, it's slide one of eighteen, that's scary.
I don't know why it, uh, show, it's showing everybody, uh, the next slide, right?
It's just showing the title slide.
Oh, okay, perfect, then, it's just on my own screen. So we are here on behalf of Morrow Equipment. Uh, Morrow Equipment has a team with Keen & Bean, Terri Anne Han has joined us, listening in, I believe, is also Jim Cotry, the facility um, manager, and we are unfortunately unable to be joined by the president, Peter Jergen. He has attended every planning board meeting and wished he could be here, but had a conflict, so, um, you know, the, the president likes to be involved. As I believe you met him in twenty eighteen, if anyone can remember. So the project is located on twenty-five point nine six acres on Lime Kiln Road, which is south of Interstate eighty-four but north of Donovan Drive, it's in the I-one zoning district. This just provides a project location overview, you can see, uh, this is our, our property right here. The nearest structure is the church, which is right here, and then we pretty much just have, uh, trees in the back and a DOT facility here. So the pro, proposed project is still, uh, what you might remember back from twenty eighteen. We are proposing to construct a contractor's yard with a twenty-six thousand square foot building, surface parking, and an outdoor storage area. Uh, the property, as I mentioned before, is twenty-five point nine six acres. The business is going to operate between seven thirty and four, seven thirty AM and four thirty PM. We can expect about twenty employees on site, there will be no lighting in the storage area. And you're probably gonna get about one to two trucks per day, maybe ten to twelve trucks per week coming to and from the site. Um, Morrow Equipment has been a, was founded in nineteen sixty-eight. It provides electric train, electric cranes for construction sites, it primarily leases and rents these cranes out. Uh, the cranes are rented out for use at these sites, they are then, uh, returned, disassembled, inspected, and rented out again. So, the contractor's yard is a permitted use in the zoning district. Um, we have an existing entry from Lime Kiln Road, we're gonna have about forty-three parking spaces, but we really only need twenty-four parking spaces. Um, we have stormwater, we're gonna put, put in stormwater to meet DEC requirements, and the only variance we need is the twenty-foot variance for, uh, material storage. So, we are before the planning board right now, we had our public hearing last week, the public hearing was closed. Uh, it was left open for written comments for about ten days, we expect that the board is going to render a secret determination next month. Um, and make a decision on the application next month as well, a- and then, you know, we'll finish up with the zoning board. This just provides an overview of, you know, where the storage area is in relation to um, the road to Lime Kiln Road is right here, we have about seven hundred and thirty feet from the road to the building. It's about four hundred and ten feet from the road to the m- material storage area. It's a hundred and ten feet to the rail and two hundred and eighty feet from building from that northern property line. This just provides an image of the proposed building. Uh, we have mentioned that there is a crane on site, the crane was the issue of our twenty-eighteen interpretation. It was determined that the crane is equipment, so that the crane does not require any height variances. The yard crane is going to be located behind the building, the crane lifts, um, the components of the, of the rented-out cranes and stores them, so this is the issue of our, our, uh, variance. The reason we need the variance is because that's how the crane equipment is stored, um, and the storage is usually about thirty feet. So, um, recently, the town has adopted a local law, it was local law number two of twenty-twenty that require, that allowed for contractor's yards, and one of the requirements was that material storage is permitted at a height not to exceed ten feet. We require, we are required to store the material in the storage yard at thirty feet, which is why we need the twenty-foot variance. This provides an image of what the material looks like. This is an image of the crane storing.
Go back one side?
Yeah, absolutely.
The, the middle picture, is that, how high is that height there?
Um, this pic, the middle picture.
Thirty, thirty feet, okay, that's what I was just wondering, okay.
Yep, so that's thirty feet. And as you can see, I mean, it's, everything is, I'll go forward, everything is neatly stacked and organized. This is not thirty feet of piles, you know, everything has a place and has to be stored appropriately. And that's for the benefit of maintaining the longevity of the equipment, um, everything has to be stored with care. So as you can see, you know, the crane has to move these component pieces into a stack. And this provides an image of the material storage area, as you can see, it is behind the building. There will be no storage in the front or to the side, it all takes place in the back along the northern property line. And that's it, so eighteen slides, I tried to go pretty fast, I know it's getting late and there's still more on the agenda, but I can go back, I can slow it down, answer more questions.
So the only question I have is, um, what's the elevation of the, the property goes down? If you're, if I'm turning on to I eighty-four or coming off of I eighty-four, that, this site is further down or further east and further down, topography-wise, the elevation is lower. So, are you tucking the storied, stored material into the height difference there into the elevation, or are you putting it on the flat area behind, you know? Um, I, I can't imagine what's gonna be behind the building there, I just can't picture that, I've never had to think about that site in that way.
If I might, Drew?
Yeah.
Terry Han, LADA, so the site, um, uh, is relatively flat. It does go up a little bit, um, as it heads towards the, uh, eighty-four on-ramp. Um, and what we're doing is we're actually cutting that area down a little bit, um, because, uh, we're just flattening it out so that it, the, the parts like to be as level as possible, and we can't get completely level, but, you know, cause we need to have a little bit of pitch there, but, um, it is tucked, uh, behind the building, so it is, I would say, uh, one, two, two, four, six, it, it looks like approximately, no, those are one-foot contours. Um, looks like it's approximately three feet, the storage area is approximately three feet lower than the adjacent, um, uh, property. Uh, we are proposing a, um, a complete screening berm along that area, and there's already a fairly heavy hedge row, uh, along that area that is not on our property, that's actually part of the DOT right of way. So we are taking that edge, that northern edge, and, um, uh, putting a, a significant amount of screening there.
Okay, so you answered my next question, which is, what's the vegetation there, or what will be, what will be there when you guys are done building? So you're, you're, there's gonna be significant vegetation there, okay, um, so um, I guess, Michael, my only other question is actually for you or Richard, um, process-wise, the planning board has closed their public hearing and expects to adopt seeker on May eighth with us finishing our variance up.
That's my understanding, right.
Okay.
So, um, I, if the board would like, you could set a public hearing, and I think secret should be done by the next meeting.
Yeah, but our next meeting won't be till after the planning board unless they're not gonna act on it.
Well, I think the planning board was planning to, you know, vote on, uh, the termination significance, and then it would allow this board to make a final vote.
Oh, okay, that's what I needed to understand.
Right.
Yeah, yes, that, that, that's, uh, the timing goal.
Understanding my confusion now, because how can they, you know, do a neg deck or whatever on a, on a, um, site plan without a variance being in place, okay. All right, so, any other questions from board members? Um, Drew, if you don't mind dropping that, the, taking the screen off, so I can see the other board members?
Absolutely.
Jim, Aziz, or Rock up, questions?
Um, I had a question, are, are you going to use the DOT screening for your screening? Are you gonna leave a swath of, uh, trees or shrubbery along that DOT line, uh, facing the, uh, the ramp for eighty-four? Um, so are you going to use, you, you mean, are you gonna leave a little bit of vegetation for screening, or are you gonna rely on DOT screening?
No, um, the, if I can, Terry Han, LADA, um, the, uh, existing screening is not on our property. It's a big cornfield out there right now, it's completely open, um, and what we're proposing is, uh, double row of evergreen trees along that entire property line, so we, we will control our own screening. Uh, you know, you, you can, you can count on DOT to leave their stuff there, but we, we feel that it's necessary to put our own screening in.
How high is your screening going to be? We're gonna say we're gonna leave some berm around the property, and I was trying to figure out how does the berm and the screening, uh, you know, tally with each other?
Uh, we are not proposing a berm, uh, because it is higher than the sur, the surrounding land, um, a, a little bit. And, um, but the, um, just the way that it grades, it sort of slopes down towards the ba, the building. Uh, we would be putting, uh, I, I don't believe at this point, we're proposing spruces, I believe we're, um, proposing larger um, uh, cedars, uh, it's something because, um, and once it gets past a certain height, it can't conflict. Uh, we wanna make sure it doesn't have any vertical conflict, uh, so we're aiming for something that'll grow to be about thirty, thirty-five feet.
Any other comments or questions from board members? I- if not, do I have a motion to schedule this for public hearing?
Oh, moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, folks, we'll see you next month.
Thank you so much, have a wonderful night.
Thank you.
Okay, item number six, appeal three nine nine two, Stephen O'Neil, Stephen O'Neil, Three Kelly Court, Stormville, is requesting a seven-foot sideline variance for a proposed two hundred and twenty square foot addition pursuant to the schedule of both regulations of the zoning ordinance. Mr. O'Neil, if you could identify yourself.
Okay, Mr. O'Neil, um, if you could please unmute yourself?
Hello?
We can hear you now, okay.
All right, thank you, hold on one sec, I can't, um, I guess my camera's not on, it's just, uh, but either way, um, Stephen O'Neil, uh, Three Kelly Court, Stormville, New York, uh, good evening and thank you.
Okay, so we're, I'm just unfortunately, what we got this survey, oh, you know what, you, you sent us a new survey. Hold on, we got a new survey.
Yes, sorry, in the, uh, after I applied, I actually went and got a survey, uh, um, a, a newer survey done, so. Got some better numbers there.
You saved yourself some time, because if not, we would have required it, so.
Yes.
All right, hold on, I gotta find. Okay, Jackie. Okay. Yeah, because what we had was so hard to read, so.
Yeah, it was an old survey.
All right, so oh, but there's not, no measurements on here. It, it's the only measurement is that it's gonna be your existing house is twenty-four point three feet away from the property line. How big is this addition, is what I'm trying to figure out? It's two hundred and twenty square feet, but is that twelve by ten, I mean, twenty by ten, what is, what are we talking about here?
Mr. O'Neil, we can, uh, see you now, but we can't hear you.
It sounds like you're really far away. Nope, oh, now you're muted. No. There's a phone number on the meeting notice, do you have that meeting notice that you can call in?
I can put it in the chat to you as well.
There you are.
I'm sorry about that, I don't know what's going on.
Okay. So the last question that I asked was, what is the size of the addition, cause those measurements are not on the plan here? He's speaking to us, I can't hear him. The phone num, the phone is muted, that's probably why we can't hear him.
Sir Neil, if, uh, your number's any in five nine three four, you can hit, uh, star six, and it'll unmute you, if that's you.
Hello? I don't know what's going on, I think that. Hello, 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 hello.
Yeah, you've gotta turn the sound off on your computer.
All righty, that, that, how's that work?
That's it, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, you would think that I would have used Zoom before, this is obviously my first time here.
You're doing pretty well for a first time.
This whole pandemic without using Zoom, and now I gotta do it, all right, so.
Welcome to the twenty-first century.
So the twenty, where it says twenty-four-point-three, uh, if you look at that on the, on the, on the, on the survey, that's the existing house line. That's a little bit of a two, so that's a two-foot cantilever, uh, from my foundation. So under, so the actual, uh, addition would be, uh, it's ten feet from the, the foundation. So going out from the backside corner of that house, which would leave me at. Going towards the back. So off the foundation, that's ten feet, and then it's twenty-three feet long.
But because of the cantilever, that's where we get the extra twenty feet. Okay, so all you're doing is you're keeping the addition in line with the sideline of the house. So that makes sense. Fine.
Correct.
And then you're proposing to put a new deck off of the back of the exis- of this new addition.
Yes, and the deck, I, I don't have anything for certain. I didn't realize. I know I spoke to Jackie about this, but I didn't real- because I know that's not gonna be as much, uh, it's not gonna be into the var- uh, into the variance, the setback as much as the addition. The addition is gonna be a, a seven-foot variance. I, I can get these numbers all plugged in. I can have the survey guy plug in how far the deck would be off, but I don't have specific plans for a deck right now. Um.
Okay, that's fine. My only question is, are there, are those stairs coming off that back addition? Because it looks like the end of those stairs, if it's gonna be again, along the line of the existing house, those stairs are gonna end up being closer than the twenty-three-point-three feet end of the addition?
Uh, they, yes, they, they, they could be. Um, I will get, um, I have an architect doing actual engineer plans. I, I didn't wanna, uh, he doesn't, I have somebody lined up. I didn't commit to it one hundred percent. I wanted to speak to you guys and make sure I get the, the ball rolling, but I'll have engineered plans. And, and yeah, it's possible because, because of the angle, how I'm slightly going in towards the, uh, the next property over. Depending on where those stairs came out, yeah, i- it could be, it could be maybe a half a foot over, which might put me around twenty, twenty-three feet, but I can get exact points plotted on the survey.
So I'm gonna suggest that we pursue an eight-foot addition, uh, and an eight, an eight-foot variance just to give you a little bit of cover. I don't know how high those stairs, how far out they're gonna go. That's what, it looks like there's a lot of stairs there. That's what worries me, so.
Yeah, that, at that level, uh, that'll be, um, it's about, it's approximately four feet underground, underground, if, uh, the, the foundation would be, is, 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 it'd be four, four feet underground. Uh, so, uh, depending on the run of the steps, it could be about, fuck, maybe six feet out, so I would have to get the drawings out and I can get exactly how, how much further.
What we'll do is, is again, you don't have that design professional on ju- on board just yet. I, I think we just could pursue the addition. Is there any screening on that side where, where you got the boulder retaining wall?
Yeah, there's, uh, actually pine trees, uh, all lined up along that side, so I can't really see the house next door.
Okay, that's great. No problem.
I have a question about those stairs coming off the house.
I'm sorry, what was that?
The stairs that you wanna come from the house that we've been discussing?
Yes.
What you're showing is the stairs going immediately from the house, and so it wouldn't be that long, but my suggestion would be that you would probably want a little bit of a landing area.
Right.
Very awkward to have a step as you open a door.
Y- yes, I, I, exactly, because that would be going actually down, down to, to, so I could utilize that space for storage down there. Um.
I understand that, but again, you always put a little bit of a porch in order to go in and out of a house before you hit the stairs.
A- absolutely. I, 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 I do, I get, I get that, so.
Uh, you're gonna extend the length of what you think the stairs are, we were just discussing, probably by what have to be at least three feet.
Three feet, right?
Yeah, three, it could be three feet, through, um, well.
I think code requires three feet.
Okay, so three, so three feet.
Plus the steps.
And then, and then the steps, so yeah, so the whole thing off of that could probably protrude from the, the original spot I have here. It could be closer to ten feet, uh, which would, which would set me in, um, or there's a foot, at that angle, there's a foot difference between that eight feet, so. I mean, I don't wanna cut it close, but eight, uh, an eight-foot variance would be almost, I think, exactly where I would have to be. An eight-foot variance or eight and a half foot.
We have a variance in whole feet, so we're talking eight feet or nine feet.
Well, so let's call it nine feet then.
Aziz, go ahead.
Yeah, what I was gonna suggest is, um, if you're still in the, um, design phases, uh, it's better, because you, you, you might need a pad also as you come down the steps, and that pad is a, you know, a, a structure, so. So I would rather move it, uh, uh, review it next month, and you, in the meantime, you can have a discussion with your architect or engineer to see what exactly are you looking for and what are your numbers going to look like, so that when you come back for a, uh, uh, variance, you and us, we, and your neighbors know exactly what you're doing.
Are you, are you sure, are you sure the pad would be counted into the stairs, or what, why wouldn't it just be like a patio type thing? I'm not sure of the answer to that.
For me? You're talking, you're talking to me, why wouldn't?
Well, I'm asking the panel the question. I'm not sure where that goes in. You need that answer. You, again, you only need ten feet away for a patio. So if you had a patio at the bottom of the stairs, that wouldn't affect the variance required for the, uh, the stairway.
I, I mean, what, that, I'm open to, I'm still in the design phase, but I, I also don't wanna put this off any, any longer, because unfortunately I have no kitchen right now. This thing all came upon me. Uh, we had ice damming and that destroyed my kitchen, so I have no kitchen right now, uh, since February third. So I, I don't wanna put this off another month, unfortunately. I mean, I'm hoping that I can get everything together and, 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 and get this thing going, whatever numbers you guys need.
I think if we go with nine feet, it will accommodate a pad, but I'm not sure the pad at the bottom of the stairs gets included as part of the structure. I don't know.
It depends if it's supporting part of the structure, Jim. If it's supporting part of the structure, then it's not a patio. So if it's supporting the st- bottom of the stairs, it's part of the structure.
Maybe. You could, you could put the bottom of the stairs on post and have the patio free.
It depends what he's doing. I, we go with nine feet. The fact that he's got pine trees, he's got screening there, he's gonna wind it up with his house. I, I don't think it's a big deal.
Yeah, I can, I thought, I said, I thought the nine feet would cover it anyway, but.
Yeah.
I think that, I think that nine, I think nine feet's gonna cover it, and I'll, and I'll, I'll, I'm gonna, I'll, I'll make it, I'll make it work, uh, um. You know, I, I, and also, uh, I might have, I might be able to have a little kick in to make that happen too. So as, as far as like the steps doesn't need to be completely flush with the, with that one si- that one side, maybe it'll be in a foot. Uh, in a foot would, which would give me, would, would, would help me. I could use that to my advantage to, uh, to keep within that nine-foot, uh, variance.
Yeah, and it probably would be in at least six inches, because you have room for the corner of the house before you put a door in.
E- exactly. You're gonna have what, the block or the port fence, whatever it is, uh, can have, and it's gonna be kicked over as well. So I, I do think that nine feet would give me plenty of room to have a little bit of a platform on the bottom there, um, and, uh, and the stairs.
Motion to advertise with nine, with nine-foot sideline variance.
Check it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so Mr. O'Neil, what happens now is we actually have to hold a public hearing next month because your neighbors have to have an opportunity to comment on this, so you're not getting approval tonight while we're doing, agreeing to let, hear from your neighbors. So if you have the opportunity between now and next month to talk to your neighbors, make sure they're in support of it. They don't have to come if you can get letters of support from them, um, or, you know, they just don't really care, so, um, the more you talk to your neighbors ahead of time, the better.
I spoke, I spoke to them, uh, the person o- on the border there, um, they're on board. They, they know everything about it, so I'm close with them.
All right, well then we'll see you next month then. All right, uh, you need to call Jackie though about signs.
Okay.
Okay.
Sure.
See you next month.
And also, and also if you can get, uh, updated version of whatever you're proposing to do, so that the neighbors and us and everybody's, we know that the nine foot is going to solve your problem, so that everything, so we're expediting it, but we'd appreciate, uh, a, a larger, um, um, you know, site plan of the location that you're trying to do. So maybe one, exactly like what you have today, and then one, uh, much more blown up area, so it's clear to everybody, okay?
Uh, sounds good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Sorry about the confusion at first.
That's okay. I, Jackie, I forgot to mention to the last two applicants that, well, the one, the moral crane about the signs. All right, I would think they already know, but I, it dawned on me, I didn't mention signs to them, okay? All right, item number seven, Appeal three nine nine three, Hector Morello. Hector Morello, seven Sherwood Lane, Stormville, is requesting a two-foot height variance for an existing six-foot-high fence located in the front yard pursuant to Section one ninety-four dash ninety-eight of the zoning ordinance. Mr. Morello, oh, we've, we found him already. So this is the first time we're submitting your application. Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
Good.
Sorry, I think I had.
Usually the echo comes from having two means of the comput- either the computer and a phone or something else going on there, so.
I mean, Mr. O'Neil's on twice, too.
Kind of pretty wild, though.
Oh, no, it gets really annoying really quickly. All right, unmute yourself on one of the devices. Uh-oh, we can't hear you.
Here we go.
Ah.
I got it now.
Success.
Yeah, this is the first time also for me using Zoom.
All right, um, so how long have you owned this property?
I just bought it September twenty nineteen.
Okay, that's what I was wondering. So the, the, the six-foot fence is there already? You, you bought the property with the fence there?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Um, so Sherwood Lane, so the fence that we're worried about is the fence that is, if you're facing the house, the fence, oh, no, you've got two front yards.
Right.
You're a corner. So we're talking about two. But that's, what color is the fence? What color?
White.
Okay. Is there any landscaping in front of it?
Not really. It's, it's grass, yes.
And so there's just a little, it, the side along Crescent Road is, uh, there's just a little bit there that's six feet and the rest of it is four feet?
Correct.
Oh, okay, all right, that's fine. Just making sure I'm reading this right. I'm not seeing any issue. Any other board members seeing an issue?
You have mentioned a deck, uh, two decks. Do you have two decks?
No, I only have one deck. I had.
Crossed out.
But there was a, a pool deck there when I purchased the home, but the bank had my contract to tear it down.
Okay, so your pool is gonna have a, its own new deck or a wraparound or something?
Right, it's, it's a new deck. It was already.
So this, so you're doing, you wanna go six feet just in the highlighted areas?
Well, it's already existing. It's there in the highlighted areas, correct, because there was a pool on that side. And my neighbors had told me that the previous owner of the home had a daughter, and he had put the six-foot fence, because he didn't want nobody, excuse me, he wanted privacy from the neighbors.
That's sad. Comments or questions from board members, or do I have a motion to advertise?
Motion to advertise.
All right, good. Mr. Morello, we will see you. Well, I have a motion, is there a second from Rocco? So all in favor of, of public hearing next month?
Aye.
Aye.
So, Mr. Morello, um, if you can contact Jackie in the next day or two about signs, you have two lot, two corner lots, you're gonna need two signs, okay?
Okay, not a problem.
And then we'll see you next month for the public hearing.
All right, take care. Have a good night.
Thank you. Have a good night.
All right.
Now you know how to use you, Zoom for next time.
Yeah, I'm learning. Take care, be safe.
You as well. All right, item number eight, Appeal three nine nine four, John Bronzy. John Bronzy, two sixteen Judith Drive, Stormville, is requesting a twelve-foot sideline variance for a proposed thirty-three-foot by eighteen-foot above-ground pool and a fifteen-foot sideline variance for our proposed forty-one-foot by thirty-two-foot pool deck pursuant to Section one ninety-four dash ninety-five and one ninety-four, Attachment three of the zoning ordinance. So, Mr. Bronzy.
Hi, how are you?
We're good. How are you?
I'm, I'm well, thank you. I got.
All right, so this is, this is the first time we're seeing your application. Um.
Okay, yes.
I guess we need to understand, why can't you move the pool over?
So I can't move it to the left because my driveway is there. Um, the driveway is on the north side of the property, and I can't move it back because my leach fields, it would encroach on my leach fields. I had, uh, a couple of years ago when I had my septic pump, pumped, um, my wife and I had kicked this idea around, because with our children, we thought it would be nice, and he looked at our, um, Department of Health septic plans, and he said, you can do an in-ground pool, but you could put something right off of your deck. So, but I obviously would need a variance because of the way it goes. So if I went, if we had turned it outward, I'm worried about it encroaching on our leach fields, and so that's why we have it situated the way we do.
Uh, you know, I'm looking at it, and based on the survey, though, the septic drainage system is listed there. It seems you have plenty of room to just go to the left.
Yeah.
Seeing the driveways there, I mean.
Yeah, I don't know if my driveway's on the survey.
Driveway.
You, you've given us a survey of a foundation under construction. This is not a house. I don't know where your house is, what other structures are on here, but I don't think you've drawn the pool to scale, Jim. I think that's part of the problem is.
Could be.
Because if you look at the measurement that of behind the house is fifty-one feet, and look at what he's sizing out is thirty-two feet, it's not even close, so. I'm not sure.
Again, it looks like it can go as far out as it is. It almost looks like you can go all the way to the other side of the house before you hit it, unless he's got the width wrong, too.
So, so this is, the, the survey I have is, is the original survey. I have contract, I'm under contract with, um, ACES, and I have them on retainer to do an updated survey, and I'd spoken to John from there, um, and said, I have my public hearing today. Well, I didn't talk to him today. I talked to him earlier in the week or end of last week, and I said, I wanted, uh, having speak, spoken with Jackie, she said, I could still come to the discussion meeting without the updated survey, but I said to him, I need certainly the survey for the public hearing, so, um.
Well, we don't know honestly what you're, we, we, I don't think I'm ready to have you go to public hearing, because I'm not sure that what you've drawn on this old plot plan, for lack of a better word, is accurate. So, when he does your survey, is he gonna put the proposed pool on, directly on this?
Yeah, so, so John, become, the surveyor has everything. He has my original survey, which you guys have with my sketch on it, um, and he has the dimensions of what I'd like to build the, the deck and the pool. And my original dimensions were from, and I, and I know it's, I'm just trying to take advantage of the tech that I have available, the, uh, Dutchess County Parcel Access with the geo mapping, which I know is not, obviously, that's why we need a surveyor. Um, but that's where I came up with the variance numbers.
So the surveyor is not giving you these numbers. You're doing them from using multiple means.
Correct. And then I added a couple of extra feet for that buffer, knowing the parcel access is not going to be a hundred percent accurate.
So unfortunately, we're talking about, we're talking about a pool and a pool is, you know, it's one of those things that where it generates noise. And so it's really important about whether it's a twelve foot or a fifteen foot variance, or whether it's, we can knock it down to be a lot, not nine foot variance. Okay? Um, what's green is along that one side? What vegetation? Are there trees there? Is there a fence there? What's there between you and your neighbor?
Between me and my neighbor currently, I, I don't have anything yet, but I've already been in contact with a tree company to put in Emerald Green. Um, evergreens. Um, I, I guess there are varieties. Yeah, they, they grow. Um, I think up to sixteen feet tall. And the plan is to put them, he said, four foot on center would give us that privacy hedge to absorb all the noise that, as you said, pools generate. So that, that's the plan to put as a barrier, um, between my neighbor and, and, and the pool. Um, as well as I do have some, I have one pine tree, but I'd like to also put some uh, to the side of my property to, to the, to the south side of the foundation. I'd like to put, um, trees there as well. Just as you had said in the earlier, I think somebody else was putting a pool up. Again, just for our privacy, but that, that screening just to provide that. So that's the plan to get about sixteen to eighteen um, Emerald Green Arbor buddies there to give that natural hedge.
Okay. And I guess the next question I need to ask is why are you going with oval versus you could get a round pool in there and probably again reduce your variance?
I, and, and I had thought about that as well. My, my concern is the obstruction of my backyard and kind of going too far back um, into the leach fields. I'd had a septic company come. I've actually had two to try to figure out what the best route is to get that second opinion. Um, and they had walked us out. Where are my distribution boxes? And the round pool, like the oval is eighteen feet. So a round pool of twenty-seven feet with the size family I have, it just would really be really close for comfort to those leach fields that I don't, I'd really rather not have to excavate by that, all of the leveling out. There's not really major excavation. Um, that I would need, but I, that's a concern. The leach fields are like, right there.
Yeah, you, I understand. You don't want to take a chance of the machines going over them or anything like that.
Right. So the eighteen foot oval gives the, it just skinnies it up. But again, obviously it extends it out. And I, I have had conversations with um, both neighbors, not that really inhibits or encroaches on my northern neighbor. But my southern neighbor, I've talked to multiple occasions and he's totally open with it, uh, and understandable as, uh, my neighbor across the street as well, who has, and we can see the house. Um, he's fine with it too. So.
Yeah.
I've had those conversations. I started those conversations with the direct.
I guess my question would be, again, it's not drawn to scale, but can it fit in completely behind the house? Uh, especially if you don't put a deck all the way around it. You don't have to have that around the whole pool. You could have it on three sides. There's no
Right.
But having the deck within the variance as much, but there's a reluctance to grant variances for pools. We have not done it in the past for people. Based on size and stuff and what they're asking for. So the, I, the question I have is when they're doing the survey is they're going to have to be pretty clear where the septic drainage system is and why it can't go completely behind your house, at least the pool part.
And I, and I honestly like, obviously, well, obviously, um, this is not what I do, but the, uh, so I didn't put in where the driveway is. But the driveway is on the northern side of the house and it wraps around the back of the house to almost um, about halfway. So I can't really shift the pool directly all the way behind the house because I would, it would be on top of the driveway as it stands right now.
Well, driveway go around the back of the house. Where's the garages?
The garage is in the, it empties out to the back of the house.
Okay.
I, I wish it did. I can't even pull into my garage because it's like a, it's like a U and the way
Is that the, is that the, is that the bump out that's called labeled existing where near where the fifty-one feet is? That's your garage?
That existing deck, I already have a CO on.
Oh, geez. I, I need a
Yeah, right. So I, and again, I'm in contract with him. So he had said to me, asked, so this is a good segue to the question, like, let them know that you're in contract with me. I didn't want to pay him to come to this meeting. I didn't think I needed to at this point. Um, but
Think you need a better survey.
Well, I, I need, I need one. This is just the original, like you had said, I think Norma, you had said it's just the plot plan.
Plot plan, right.
It's all I had to go off of and the Duchess County Parcel Mapping. Um, but
All right, so.
Ask them when you need it by for the public hearing and I will, he, he, he can oblige. So
I don't, I don't think that we're comfortable setting a public hearing because there's just not enough information here. So um, I'm not comfortable going to public hearing. If, if others are, I'm only one person. So.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I have an updated survey explaining what everything is and basically drawn to scale. And I would appreciate a map which enlarges the thing because you have a, a deck that, uh, I thought there was like your turnaround, U-turn into your, uh, your, your garage, but maybe it's not, maybe I don't know what it is. So I just need a, a new survey. And it's, uh, too early, uh, to take it to a public hearing.
Cause he, I think that's also missing. Sorry. The, the, the last time we saw was also going to give us a landscape plan as well. So um, that would be helpful if you're going to provide a landscape plan as well. But again, there's just not enough information here for us to know that these numbers are even wildly accurate. So.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think the board members have raised enough questions to necessitate really seeing the true numbers of a plan and where everything is laid out. Uh, it'd be fine the way it is, but I think we really need to see that.
The survey is going to have to really define where your septic drainage system starts where you can't build on top of it. Because that's a big part of, you know, you can't just be guessing where it is. They're going to have to define that somehow. That's gotta be marked out on the survey.
Okay. So can I just review what for the next one? Obviously the updated survey with, and you want a landscape plan, you said from one of the last conversations, I forget which number. All on one sheet. So like the landscape plan and the site plan, everything on one sheet.
It would be helpful. The important thing is to get your survey. Okay. Your accurate survey of what's on your property now and showing, have that, have the surveyor in, you know, put on there where the proposed pool would be and the deck. Okay?
Yeah.
We need to understand why not, as Jim said, why not a three-sided deck?
You can't go back.
And if we can eliminate that variance, then it makes it easy. It makes our job easier. But if we can't, then you know, if there, if there's some critical reason why that's important, then you still need, you really should be showing us a landscape plan. How are you not? Because you're going closer to the, to the neighbor's yard than you should be. How can we minimize the disturbance to your neighbors?
Right.
It's what, whatever your proposed landscaping is going to be. Okay?
Okay.
So with that information, we'll see you next month and then we'll schedule you for public hearing and get this done. All right. But right now thi- this is just too loosey goosey. So.
Okay.
That's a technical term.
Yeah. All right. Thank you guys very much.
All right. We'll see you next month.
All right. Bye bye.
Needs new survey. Okay. Item number nine. Appeal three, nine, nine, five, Halina. I'm so sorry. I don't want to say your name wrong, but Zubieska. Halina Dubey Zubieska, three forty-six White Pond Road, Stormville is requesting a variance for an existing six hundred square foot, foot workshop in a detached accessory structure greater than three hundred and fifty square feet. Pursuant to section one ninety-four dash one oh seventy of the zoning ordinance. So good evening.
Good evening.
The first thing I'm going to do is ask you to pronounce your last name for me.
Harina Jubelska.
Ju, Ju, Jubelska. Okay.
Wonderful.
Again, I'm sounding it out phonetically on my paper, so I won't say it wrong next time. Okay. So there's an existing six hundred square foot structure on your property from where? When, when was it built?
Nineteen ninety-eight.
Oh, there's a gentleman.
Nineteen ninety-seven, nineteen ninety-eight.
Okay. Were you the ones that built it?
Yes.
Yeah, I built it.
Okay. Was it built with a permit?
I actually, I, I came to the town and then, uh, was back that years and then, um, I asked the building inspector or someone in zoning department, uh, I said, I want to build the shed because I, I was on the, on the construction business. So, uh, I have some, some, some stuff that I have to keep it dry and then some, some tools. And then, you know, they said, uh, if you want to build a shed, you don't really need the, need the, the permit. So, uh, I may misunderstand what, what was being going on because I was pretty busy and then I just, I just done. And then, uh, now we, we tried to, uh, corrected everything. So, uh, building inspector asked to, to complete that this, uh, everything the right. So, um, that we did, uh, I asked Mike Galipsi to do the, the blueprints and the new surveys. Now I want to just make sure everything is right, uh, done.
All right. Um, so I'm just trying. So this survey was done in two thousand and nineteen. And it's showing two sheds, but then it looks like one shed's being cross, is crossed out.
Yeah, one, uh, is the Euro, I did the back where I moved, I built my house was the little, little, like the, I fixed the tools or something. And then they asked me to take it down. So I already taking down right now.
You're taking that shed down now. Okay. Only going to be left with the shed. That's thirty point two times twenty on one side and twenty point two on the other side.
Yeah, it's just too, too, too larger.
Which is more than six hundred square feet?
Yes.
So we need to get the actual measurement of this shed so that we're, or the workshop, whatever it is. Is there electric in this? Is there water?
No, electric. Both side doesn't have electric at all.
About water or heat?
Nothing. Just, 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 uh, some stuff. I, I keep, now I keep just the mower and some, some, uh, you know, I bought the extra ply and the other stuff, but I'm gonna use it someday, you know, because I still could do constructions.
Okay. So because I guess you've already got a detached garage, we can't call it a garage. What's the floor on it?
Which one? Uh, next to the house?
The, the shed. What is this? This workshop? What's the floor in the workshop?
Uh, it, is the, one is the, I think it's
Concrete.
Concrete floor. One, both that have a concrete floor.
Uh, we're talking about the one that's staying. Okay. So the, the shed, not the one that you're tearing down, the shed that's going to stay has a concrete floor?
Yeah, both has the concrete floor. Yeah.
So Jackie, is the issue that they're calling this a garage or it's just another accessory structure and it's not?
The issue is it's an accessory structure over three hundred and fifty square feet.
Got it.
Size of, um, the one accessory structure.
What is it finished with? Does this, does this, is it the same material as your house or is it a different color? What is it finished with?
Uh, is the, is the house is the finished with a siding, the cedar siding, but the shed, the vinyl siding.
Are they at least the same colors?
Uh,
Yes.
Yeah, pretty much. Close.
Okay. All right. I mean, you've got a long, you've got a long flag pole to your, you're, you're on a flag lot. So you've got a long pole to get back to your property. So I'm sure this build, this structure is not visible to the road. Is it visible to any of your neighbors around you?
No.
So there's others, there's vegetation, there's screening around it. There's
Yes.
Oh, and you've got what have you got? What, what lands are behind you? New York City's land. So you've got, um, watershed property behind you?
Yeah.
So that's not going to get developed. So that's not gonna um, motion advertised?
I had a question. You have got two, um, wood furnace and it says to be moved and to be relocated. What does that mean?
Um, it was the, before it was the, we, we had some, uh,
Yes, we, we relocated the furnace to the back of the house because it didn't match the, um, the distance from the house. It was too far. It's, it was about fifty feet and supposed to be twenty-five feet from the house. So we moved it and it's in the rear.
Yeah.
What's the function of these wood furnaces? What are they heating?
Oh, we're heating just the house.
They heat up the house? Yes. Yes. So they're both being used?
No, one.
No, one, that is only was the one where I moved because the inspector said it's too far from the house. It must have been twenty-five feet from the house. So because we did this back and I, uh, ninety-nine or something, I, why install that? So I wasn't know, I guess was no, no permit or something. So I, and he, now he said it's too far from the house. So he wanted me moved to twenty-five feet close to the house. So that I, and then I decided because I had the hard time to get with the truck because it's a little bit wet and sloppy. So I moved it. We, it's like now I can get with the truck closer to the, to dump the wood. That is what I did.
So then this, uh, wood furnace, um, um, you're going to move it closer now? Uh, have you moved it or what?
We moved, moved less, moved less year.
Okay. So your new survey will show that.
It's on the survey.
It's on the survey, new location.
Proposed.
Um, oh, so where it says to be relocated, that means that's where the wood furnace is being moved to.
Yes.
So there's not two, that, that's what the confusion is to, when it says to be relocated, it, to us, it means that it's there and it's going to get moved.
No, no, no.
To saying new location or something like that. Okay. So Aziz, you, you were asking the same thing I was. There's only one wood furnace, one, one to be moved is where it got moved from to the pla- to the place where it's labeled to be relocated.
Yes.
Now is that considered a structure or just, or does it come under ZBIA or not?
Well, it's within, why, what are you concerned about? It's, doesn't look like it would need a variance.
Okay. Motion to advertise.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Hi, all right. Mr. And Mrs. Jubelski, Jubelska, sorry. We will see you next month.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right. Just contact Jackie in the next couple of days and she'll give you the information about your sign that you're going to have to post at the end of your driveway. Okay?
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Good night.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number ten, appeal three, nine, nine, six, L Jeffrey Kelly, L Jeffrey Kelly, nine Creekside, Creekside Road, Hopple Junction is requesting a nineteen foot sideline variance and a five foot rear line variance for a proposed one thousand two hundred and ninety-six square foot detached garage pursuant to section one ninety-four dash one oh seven of the zoning ordinance. Sixty percent of the footprint of the house is one thousand three hundred and twenty-seven square feet. So he's within the sixty foot, Jackie? So he's within the sixty foot, Jackie?
Sixty percent.
He's he's within the sixty percent, sorry.
Yes, he's in the bin for sixty percent.
Okay, so the size is not necessarily the issue, it's well, except that it is.
Too big, yeah.
Forcing you to be further where than you need to be, so. Tell us what's going on, what is what's the purpose? Why do you need such a large garage? For for it to be and why can't you put it further like behind your house?
So I believe Brian from Dan's Ticos is gonna present.
Oh, okay.
I'm happy to I'm here and happy to answer questions.
That's fine, no problem, Brian, if you can raise it, there we go. Okay, thank you. Brian, you're muted. There you go.
Hey, guys, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Pretty good, um yeah.
Take us to take us take us through this. This is the first time we're seeing this one, so.
Yes, ma'am. Um we have an existing residence. Can you guys see my screen?
Yep.
Got existing residence along Creekside, uh Creekside Road in the front here, septic in the front, existing driveway along the. Left side of the property, house is located here. Um and as you kind of come into the to the property, it's relatively level. And then as soon as you kind of get past the driveway here, the grades goes up considerably. Um so a- as far as the driveway in in the garage position. The only real spot um to put this garage is just following the flow of the driveway and putting it right past the house. Um we kicked the garage back slightly to allow access to the backyard area. There's a deck here, there's a bump out on the house here. And there's also access to the well here, so if anybody ever had to uh maintain the well, they could get through here with a truck. Um and maintain the well. Um as far as grade goes, we're gonna we're gonna hold the elevation here at the existing garage and do uh. About a three percent or or less grade up into the garage floor area here. And then um a portion of this this garage will also act as a retaining wall. So what we're trying to do is just basically just just excavate out this material here, do a twelve inch port wall, it'll be a structural wall. Um so like as a retaining wall and it'll also um support the framing of the uh of the garage. Um and the applicant is has requested this size garage for storage of his of his automobiles and equipment and you know, just. Regular household stuff in the garage. Um I have. I may have to stop sharing this and show you. Have a rendering here that we did. Can you guys see this?
Yes.
Yes, this is the uh. This is the garage here. Um we have a ten foot bay and a sixteen foot door here. There is a there's a doorway into the build into the garage and then there'll be some uh some attic storage above. Um you can see here, here are the side profiles, so this would be the garage entrance here and then we're gonna step the foundation up. And we'll have a a ten foot um actually a twelve foot retaining wall here in the back and then the framing will come off of that. And then scooting, I think we have. I don't know if I have any other. Lands, I think those are the only elevations, yeah, these are the elevations that I have here, storage in the attic above. Um and the the material is to match the existing house. Um and that's basically the application. It's it's specific to what the applicants can store in there. I'll leave it to the applicant to describe. The nature and the use of it, but it was just for storage of his of his vehicles and just some extra space.
It's uh talk about the second floor a little bit more. The applicant, is is there gonna be heat and water in this? What's going on?
No, no heat, no water.
No electric?
Well, I'm sure I'm gonna bring electric to the house to raise and lower the garage doors, but. Turn lights on, but beyond that, no.
Cause a full it's got a full set of stairs to get up to that second floor. We wanna just make sure that there's not gonna be any residential use up there.
Right, so so the I can I can explain that in depth. I went back and forth to the engineer, one of Brian's colleagues on that. Uh the original plan, the engineer assumed was a pull down uh attic stair staircase.
Right.
Like you would see in in a residential home. But the plate height is twelve, sorry, the ceiling height is twelve feet. And I didn't really wanna be skinning up this this pull downstairs for twelve feet um with, you know. A small car part or a big car part, you you name it, right? It it doesn't make it. Uh usable at all, so this I found was a much, much safer option.
And so how tall in all is the structure gonna be?
I think from uh from foundation to the top of the ridge, it's uh twenty four feet. Plus or minus.
And that's what's allowed by code, right? Sorry, Ray's not here, so.
Yeah, we'll fall within the code provisions.
Alright, just making sure. Comments or questions from board members? Um actually, I do have more, there's uh now that we're looking at this, your survey here, there's other structures. How close are they to the property lines? There's a gym set, there's a swing, there's a frame shed. There's a gazebo on the front of the house. Please tell me it's attached to the porch.
Yeah, what you wanna what you wanna know about first?
Uh start with the gazebo, let's start from the.
The gazebo is part of the front porch. Built with the house in eighty nine.
Alright, the swing set. How far away is it from the property line?
Uh within twenty five feet.
At its closest point, how far away is it?
Five feet.
Oh, from the property line?
It looks that way, yeah.
The gym set or the swing? Which one are you talking about?
Those are all the same to me. The gym set is what I was referring to.
Alright, cuz I was talking about the swing, okay?
So so the swing is probably like on the survey. Plot plan, whatever you wanna call it, I believe that dotted line, Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, is a twenty five foot line.
Yeah, Norma, if you see the the uh the long.
The buildable area, right?
Yeah, that's that's a twenty five foot offset, yeah.
Okay, so, okay, so are we moving the swing and the gym set?
I didn't intend on it.
Then we need to give, then you need to request a variance for them.
Then I'll take them down.
Okay, how about the frame shed?
That's been here before my time and I believe there's a permit for it. So I that I don't have an answer for you beyond beyond that.
That only has to be fifteen, okay, but again, there's no measurements here, so I'm.
Yeah, if Norma, if you look at that rear line, that's a fifty foot offset, so he's yeah, he's okay.
Yep.
Alright, otherwise it looks. Alright, any comments or questions from board members?
I'm good, thank you.
I'm good.
Motion advertise?
Don't move.
Second.
On favor?
Hi.
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 One abstention.
Okay, is there a reason for the abstention?
Um I know the applicant.
Oh, okay, that's fine, no problem.
So mysterious.
Just have never, you know, we haven't had an abstention in a long time. Alright, so Brian, you'll get signs, you'll do what what you need to do.
Make it happen. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Alright, item number eleven, appeal three nine nine seven, Thomas Farney, Thomas Farney, ninety ninety Moonlight Drive, Stormville. Is requesting a seventy seven square foot area var- variance for a proposed nine hundred and sixty square foot detached garage pursuant to. Section one ninety four dash one oh seven of the zoning ordinance, sixty percent of the footprint of the house is eight hundred and eighty three square feet. So this is the night for Stormville, I think like every other application this evening is Stormville. The Farneys have joined us.
Good evening, all, can you hear me?
We can hear you, yes, good. Okay, so you are proposing a thirty foot by thirty two foot garage. For vehicles and storage.
Correct.
Uh two bays, three bays, what are we talking about here?
There's gonna be two bays and some additional area to put in A T Vs.
Did you get us a new survey as well or is this?
No, I've actually been in touch with a surveyor. I just wanted to find out which surveys would be needed because there seems to be some debate. Whether it would be one for a proposed garage, a foundation, because it's gonna be pulled on and a built as. Uh I already got estimators for all three in case all three are needed, so depending on what the board recommends or advises what I need. It will be completed.
I I mean.
Well, the the as well theaters and I can't read this one. That has to do with the building department, that doesn't have to do with us.
Okay.
But you'd need a real, you know, regular.
So am I understanding correctly that your existing house is like all the way back on your? No.
No, you may be looking at it uh.
Yeah.
Yeah, if moonlight's on.
So it's on Moonlight Drive?
Yes. And the house sits back probably about, I would guess, a hundred feet from the road.
So why do you need a variance? Because it seems that uh I mean.
Greater than the sixty.
Cause it's greater than the, yeah.
Bailey, I've been working with uh Jackie to try to get, we came very close, we just fall short.
And you've your due diligence already, we this is the application, guys, where we've already got letters from three of his neighbors, so I mean.
Yes, and we also canvassed the whole block. We spoke to several neighbors on the block. I actually had a. Offers to assist in building it, but we're paying somebody, so they've been very receptive to it. Uh the area, if you look what to look at at the street, we have a huge incline. And then it tapers to a decline, so the whole structure would not be observed from the from the street as well. Uh the site we picked, there used to be a a swing set in that location. And as I said, there's like a big hump in front, that area was uh graded, I guess, and leveled off. Which makes it easy to build for us. Uh the swing set was taken down, by the way.
Okay, and what's it gonna, what's the finish gonna be? Is it gonna match your house?
Yes, it's gonna be colors that are similar to the house. So it's gonna be aesthetic for the uh the neighborhood uh as well. Except the roof, we're gonna have a metal roof because the durability, the uh more pleasant to look at. So that'd be the only deviation. And I know you asked this question before, so if it's asked again, I'll try to intercept it, what it's gonna be used for. We currently have four vehicles, I we own three. But I'm a police officer in K nine, so they provide a take home vehicle. Uh I really don't like that being on the the front of the house. Uh everyone knows what's going on nowadays with law enforcement, so I'd like to get all the vehicles added to driveway and protected. Additionally.
Go ahead.
Uh additionally, we have uh four A T Vs, we have a young child, we do a lot of uh outdoor activities, snowmobiles, uh we sent Jackie some photos. Where the board can see the vehicles in the driveway and the garage is just overpacked. A lot of the neighbors are receptive to this because we remove the eyesore from the driveway. And there will be no utilities, so no electric, no heat, no water, etc. It's just plain.
How about a second floor?
There is, they're putting a trust system in, so it would create a vacancy down the center, uh not the full size of the garage. Uh that would be used for storage of uh holiday decorations, we decorate for Christmas, etc. So it'll be things like that and my son's not here, I could say the high Christmas gifts.
Oh, been there, done that, okay. Um questions from board members?
Motion to advertise.
Thank you, Aziz, I was headed there. Second. On favor?
Hi.
Hi, alright, um so Thomas, you would need to contact Jackie in the next couple of days about a sign, otherwise we'll see you next month.
Great, have a great evening, folks.
You too. Alright, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
On favor?
Hi.
Hi.
I just have one question before we turn off, though. Jack, is that decision I read and I made changes to it, do you want me to?
No, I actually got them.
Okay.
I was prepared today.
Okay.
Thank you, Bill.
You're welcome. All set.
See you next month.
Good night, everyone, see you next month.